Mr. Burris? Would you please announce the...
All righty. Our special guest leading us in prayer tonight is Pastor Tim Estes from New Life Church down in Siloam Springs. And thank you so much. Appreciate it. If you'd be willing to lead us in prayer, we sure appreciate that. And by the way, if you're the kind of folks that pray, Pastor Estes here tore his biceps tendon, and that's why he's got the cool hardware. So, look, you pray for him.
Bionic man here, so let's pray together. Thank you for this privilege. Gracious heavenly Father, we humbly bow to thank you for the gift of life from the cradle to the grave. It is you, bountiful Lord, who permits us to live, to move, and to have our being. We are mindful that every joyful experience, every encouraging word, even the sweet taste of an August grape is a gift from you. Help us to be in remembrance of our great accountability for these manifold blessings. To this end, we present this prayer, for we know that our best without you is never enough. However, we have witnessed the presence of your grace, not only in giving us salvation through the death and resurrection of your Son, but also in the daily activities of our lives. As such, we humbly ask that your guiding hand would be upon these civic leaders as they make decisions which affects the citizenry of Tonny Town and surrounding areas. We pray you would bless them for the time they spend in reading reports, mulling ideas, meeting with all manner of people. Help them to make decisions which would first honor you, secondly, bless the people and families under their governance. We also bless the men and women who work behind the badge and who run to the battle to keep us all safe. May your protecting hand be upon them each time they put on the uniform. Lastly, we want to say thank you for these United States of America and the Christian heritage of our founding, for the holy scriptures whose words give us life and are founded throughout our sacred documents and which are engraved in the marble of our nation's capital. May we never forget that without you we are nothing, but with you we can dare to dream great dreams. These things we pray in the name of your holy Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I would like to call the August 19th, 2025 meeting in order. Roll call, please. Mike?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Amber?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Misty?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seek approval for the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Roll call. Tim?
Something was added, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. Looks like on 13A, they added the acceptance of the 23 to 24 audit report.
I would love to talk about the audit report, but I'm going to vote no on this particular agenda.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
No.
Larry?
No.
Motion fails. Dustin?
I can bring up a point about that, please.
Excuse me?
May I bring up a point about this?
Yes, sir.
The reason for voting. I understand that we have to talk about this by law. We're required. We're already late on this anyway. We were here for a special city council meeting last night, and this agenda was not here. It may be a mere formality of accepting it, but I think there are some issues in there that do need to be discussed. So, with all that being said, if we could just put it on the next Cal meeting, it would be fine with me, so that we can delve into this a little bit further, unless Mr. Eichman needs to clarify.
I was going to say, we wouldn't be discussing it tonight. It would be discussed at the next Cal meeting.
Okay. Well...
That was the case. The requirement is that this is basically an acknowledgement that everybody's received it. I understand that you guys have gotten it in the mail. I was going to have the mayor say, you know, if somebody didn't get a copy, to let us know and make sure the city gets you a copy, and then, you know, could have discussion about any questions about the agenda, I mean, about the audit or the findings at a Cal meeting or future Cal meetings.
Okay.
But it is required that we have it in the minutes that it's been received and accepted.
If that's all we're doing with this tonight, then I will change my vote to a yes, if that's permissible.
We can re-vote. I will do the same.
So, no, but somebody who voted no can do a motion to reconsider?
So, the verbiage acceptance, what does that mean exactly? Because acceptance is a word I'm not necessarily comfortable voting yes on.
That means you received the audit.
Okay. I'm willing to call that acknowledgement of receipt of audit report, but otherwise I'm going to vote no on that again. But I would like to make a motion that we change item 13A to say acknowledgement of receipt of 2023-24 audit report.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
So, then, Mayor, you have amended, you have an amendment to the agenda, and now I think that you need to just go ahead and approve the agenda.
Okay.
I don't think we have a motion for that yet.
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
Roll call. Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of the July 15th, 2025 city council minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Approval of the August 4th, 2025 special city council minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty? We'll move on to the financial report. Ms. Ardemani?
Okay, this is for July 2025. City general income was 812,41910. Expenses were 375,55904, left a positive operating income of 436,8606. Water and sewer income was 569,70226. Expenses was 365,073.88, with a positive operating income of 204,62838. Streets income was 98,40643. Expenses was 50,38472. We did receive some insurance claims checks in for the city building and the public waterworks building. There was some IT stuff that was done for the fire department, the Kennedy Server, and they did some engineering for water and sewer and materials and supplies. And then, for the streets, they bought a lawnmower.
Thank you. Go on to the department reports. Museum?
So, reporting first about an increase in visitors due to the Tonny Town Grape Festival. We were open for extended hours during festival time, and just during those extended hours, we had 131 visitors, both from out of town and locally. Some of those from out of town were Tonny Town, people with Tonny Town roots, so we were happy to host them. Our digitization project is going well, and the current count of items in our collections and archives that are in our cataloging system is 2,156. We've been shifting focus a little bit, and I'm kind of overseeing this project, to refine the entries that are already in there, with the goal of publishing this collection and archives online toward the end of 2025. We hope that having this catalog online will allow researchers, students, and out-of-town patrons to be able to access our collection from anywhere and to prepare for their visit. You'll notice on, as we're refining the data that we have in our catalog, that on our social media, you'll see us sharing photos that need to be identified, some of the context or the subjects in the photos. So, keep an eye on that, and if you can, comment. If you see people that you know in those pictures, please give us a comment so that we can update those entries in our cataloging system. In July, we, and that should say 2025, we had 33 visitors. We're working on two new exhibits for 2026, an expanded veterans exhibit that will build on what's here in City Hall and will highlight veterans that served from Tonny Town since World War I and all the way through Vietnam and beyond, if we can access that information. We would love to be able to share stories and artifacts, so if we're calling to the public for sharing those with us, so that we can tell as complete and accurate of a story that we can. Next year will also be the 250th anniversary of the United States of America, and so we'll have a small exhibit that is in conjunction with that. It's called the Semi-Quincentennial. I learned a new word. And we'll talk about the foundings of the town and some of the, you know, the early government and early businesses and things like that, as how Tonny Town is kind of a microcosm of the United States story. So, look forward to those. Some of our fall programming that's coming up, there's going to be a special showing of Cries from the Cotton Field at the Springdale Public Library on September 21st. That is in conjunction with Welcoming Week NWA, so there are a lot of events happening all over NWA, and the museum has been reached out to participate in that, so we feel like that will be a really good public audience. And Emily will be hosting a lecture for the Ollie Group, as well as hosting a booth at Arkansas Symbols Day at the Shiloh Museum. So, as always, we invite you to follow our social media and visit the museum to see what's new in there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Police Department Chief Jensen?
For the month of July, we responded to 1,201 calls for service, filed 12 accident reports, served 93 warrants. 1324 warrants are still active, a little over 1.6 million outstanding warrant fine amounts, 3,150 training hours year-to-date, 254 total citations, 29 for speed, 112 other traffic violations, 27 criminal, 86 improper driving, 901 total warnings, 509 for speed, 392 for other traffic warnings. The uptick you see in the speed was during the month of July was a federal grant funded overtime for officers for speed enforcement. Any questions?
Not so much a question, but I wanted to thank you. I had seen on Facebook the undercover investigation y'all had did, and it made, you know, the news. So, I just want to thank you for your efforts on that and getting those guys off the street.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I have a question. Haven't asked this in a while. So long it's been that you still might not even know what I'm going to ask you, but the outstanding warrants, up to 1.6 million now, I know that you can't do anything about that, but where are we in the midst of all that with, I mean, I know this started back in COVID, and it's continued in a lot of ways, but has there been any change on a county level that's helped with any of this?
There's a little bit. There's still quite a bit of jail overcrowding that they're still trying to work on. There's, they've got a remodel going on currently in the jail. So, we have, as a department, started to arrest if there's multiple FTAs, failed-to-appear warrants for court, missing court, we are arresting for that and taking them to jail. So, hopefully, that curbs some of it, but yet to be seen.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Fire Chief Krug?
Evening, Council. Month of July, we ran a total of 60 calls. We had 30 EMS, four fires, six MBAs, seven false alarms, four service calls, five alarms, four canceled en route. July 2025 to date, had 356 calls for service. July 24, we had 286, increase of 70 calls to date over 2024. Our average response time, minute and 16 seconds, and average on-scene arrival time is four minutes and 19 seconds.
Any questions? Council? Thank you, sir. All right. Next, we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Clark?
Good evening. The Brush Creek Sewer Interceptor Project is still in design, but to repeat again, we did receive grant funding from Congressman Mowmac on that. This is going to be a game changer for the Tonny Town Sewer Department. Wastewater Master Plan Sewer System Flow Study is completed. Track Design Group is currently evaluating the data collected. They will be providing us with a comprehensive report within a couple of weeks, and this information will be extremely important as we plan for the future growth of Tonny Town Sewer System. Highway 412-612 sewer extension is essentially complete. They are finishing the cleanup and seed and revegetating the area. Chamber Springs Water System, it's been a fairly recent development on that. The managing attorney for Arkansas Department of Agriculture notified Cassie Elliott, who is kind of heading the Chamber Springs system, if you remember, notified her that regarding the objection by WWA to the Chamber Springs Water System, they basically have negotiated an agreement, whereas WWA will withdraw their objection to that system, meaning that they can move forward, get their engineering done, and construct that water system. However, they made it clear, this is not a waiver of rights to challenge Tonny Town for the service area. Anyway, good for Chamber Springs, still to be determined for Tonny Town. The ADQ Sewer System Evaluation Study Report, CK Civil is putting that together for us. We've got to turn that in by the end of the month. Most of the field data's been collected at this point. Next week, Zach will be compiling the data into the formal report. Primary objective of this study, if you remember, is to identify the condition or possible degradation of the sewer system downstream of the landfill. That's all I got. Any questions?
I do have one question. Our new water tower's going up beautifully, but since I look at it and my neighbors look at it, I'm getting questions on when it might be done.
It is a 500-day contract, so...
I know it'd be a while, and I told them it'd be a while, but I thought I'd still ask.
I'm thinking probably fall of next year.
Okay.
They will be complete.
It's going quickly. I've been quite impressed watching it as I drive by each day.
This part goes fairly quick. The rest of it will be slower. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Next, our building report. Mr. Latham? And community development. I guess we should all put that into one.
We're doing really well on the commercial side. If you notice, our evaluation is pretty close to where it was last year, and we still have about five months more to go. We anticipate that to set a record, along with the commercial building fees. As you see, we're, this year, we've already had 87 permits compared to 92 last year, which is a record, so good things on that side. Residential side, again, we're still lagging behind where we've been the last couple of years. When you talk to home builders, what they're looking at is for the famous feds to actually start lowering interest rates, and you would see the house boom going, but that seems to be where their trigger is right now. Anybody have any questions on that?
I do. Yeah. You mentioned last year, several occasions, that we probably don't want to grow more than 3%. So, when I hear a word like boom, that makes me feel like it's going to be more than 3%. Has your thought changed on that?
No.
So, how do we keep it from going beyond 3%?
I don't think you can, as long as people are willing to sell their property, and it's own property to be able to develop. You know, it's going to continue. I don't know how you stop it, and, you know, I've, from the commercial side, that's a good thing, because that's, in most cases, is going to produce some kind of a revenue for the city.
Right.
So, you know, that's a good thing. But, you know, I was going to mention, in my planning was, is, I mean, we had two precons, two more subdivisions. One, these are actually about three years old. One is the, oh, I think, Sloancrest. Sloancrest was a small subdivision, a little over 30 lots, coming off of South Bandini. It's actually entrance right there across from Taldal Loop. They've got everything ready to go. They've got their grading permit, so that'll be moving on. The other one, which is the last R4, that was actually zoned, which is Willow Trace. Willow Trace is the subdivision down there off of Kelly, kind of the corner of Kelly and Dow, and they have everything together, and so you'll see some development going on there.
How many, about how many plots of land or how many houses?
Sloancrest is pretty small. It's less than 35. That's an R3. I believe the Willow Trace was about 65, if I remember right, something like that.
And is that all that we have that's currently being built? Or there's still some that are still being built that aren't quite?
I'm not aware of any more that we actually have approved, correct?
I mean, if you're looking for in progress, we have several in progress right now.
I am, yeah.
Yeah. We've got...
We've got Ranley Ray over here.
Maralochi, we're getting building permits with them right now, first base.
So, and that's about how many folks?
I think we're in the first base, I think about 70 lots.
Okay. And Amalfi's?
They're looking to apply for their final flat for first base. That's about 42 lots.
Okay.
And we've got a place called Amalfi.
Never heard of them.
That's great.
Remind me, how many are at Amalfi?
120, maybe?
Okay. So, let me do some quick math here, if you don't mind. So, that's about 416 more houses, and based on numbers I got from you, Mark, that's another 4,576 trips per day on our city's roads. That's about 137,000 more a month, 1.6 million more per year. So, infrastructure-wise, we've got a problem that seems to be getting far worse, so I'm, I would love to have more conversation with you about maybe how we do some of that stuff. I don't have answers, but I'd sure love to hear what are some things we could possibly...
Well, the challenge is, is that everything's going west, because that's where all the property is.
You mean westward?
Everybody in the big cities are growing up. You see, I mean, I can't believe how many apartment complexes are being built in northwest Arkansas. It's unbelievable. But, you know, it's just like we sat with a group today off of Taldal Loop. I mean, these are going to be estate lots, nice subdivision, but they are going to be required to, you know, improve Taldal Loop as required of our code, so, yeah, it's going to be a challenge. I can't tell you any different than that, but if we all stick together and try to figure all this out, we'll get there, believe me. I've known Tim for 40 years. He could tell you, in Siloam Springs, we've been able to do what we claim to do, I think, hopefully.
Okay. Thank you.
Huh?
Thank you. And I'm going to get that character reference from you, Pastor.
Okay. He remembers beat back when I was a swim coach. That's how long ago it's been. I also want to tell you that ABC Supply, which is a good company, just is moving into the old hand of candles. They're doing a real nice job on the facade. It doesn't look like crap out there. And, I'm sorry, it's my old-school stuff, but anyway, no, seriously, you know, that's a good sales tax. I mean, they sell nothing but basically roofing, but they do windows, and they do sheet metal and all that kind of stuff, so we're looking forward to them to be here, for sure. I did want to mention, too, you know, I'm sure you're wanting to know how things are going now. We've kind of reclassified everything. You know, under the Community Development Department right now, things are going well. We've got a good crew that I'm responsible for. They're interesting learning. That's probably the number-one thing I expect out of employees. And the other thing is having great customer service. That's two things that need to be done. One thing I've noticed, I'm trying to look at, you know, how we might be able to streamline things, and one thought is, is that we might want to think about bringing business license into the permit area. There are some things that probably would touch base with the building area if somebody is issued a business permit, so it's just a thought that you might think about as we move forward. Let's get to streets and stormwater. James and I met with the engineer for the 412 Barrington this week, and we talked about the water line, and so our next step is we're going to get back to the church again, talk a little bit about some maybe options for them to tie that whole thing into their sign and what they're trying to do out there with their perw walk, and it's pretty, it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Pretty cool. Fletcher, as you know, Zach's been working on the second phase of Fletcher plans. We hope to get those out to bid sometime this year, and then get started in trying to finish up that project. Managati Street Upgrade, Tomlinson has been notified and is scheduled to start work September 8th on that project. South Panado Stormwater Improvements, the bid will open on September 8th. We do have quite a few people interested in that project, at least picked up plans for it. I did want to mention, I gave you a copy of what we're proposing, and it's currently out for bid, on what street improvements we're going to be doing. Each year, we, as you know, we set aside money to be able to do some street improvements, and that's what is being currently bid out. That's supposed to be opened up the 28th, so hopefully at the Cal, you guys will be able to act on that. The Ardemani Sidewalk Tap Grant...
So, we don't have any dates on any of these yet, because they're premature?
They're out.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. We don't have anything yet, but we will on 28th. You guys will see them on your next Cal meeting. The Ardemani Sidewalk Project, we did receive seven engineering proposals, statements of qualifications. I put together a group Tuesday. We're going to review those and come up who we think is the best fit for it, and follow through on the process with RDOT. The community building grant was submitted last month, and so hopefully we'll hear something, I think, in September, October. It's a lot earlier than the outdoor recreational grant. We'll submit the outdoor recreation grant this week. That's for the splash pad. Recreation Grant this week. That's for the splash pad. Other projects, uh, public engagement meeting went well. There was about fifty in attendance. I've got some good comments back. We also had a survey. People could fill out regarding the community building as well as the parks, so we got some good information on that. I did give you a copy of the budget schedule, and, uh, department goals are due on September twelfth, so I'll try to get those goals to you all, uh, on the council meeting in September. That way you can kind of see what's gonna happen in the next year and how that affects the budget. Um, Clink Road. Now, I'm gonna talk about the stoplight. I'm not gonna talk about the road. You guys tell me what you want to do with the road. I'll figure that out. Um, I'm meeting with RDOT and also the contractor on the signal. Um, we finally have gotten some information. They've only got about fifty days left to complete the project, if that tells you anything. Um, most of their work is gonna be done at night, so there will be some lane closures. So, there'll have to be some information that will be put out. Hopefully, I'll have that information tomorrow, uh, from not only the, the contractor, but also the, uh, engineer. Most of that stuff is, they're gonna have to put that stuff across the road, so that's all have to be done at night. Um, let me just mention just briefly about Clink. Um, one of, we're doing two, two things to kind of evaluate the road right now, from the traffic standpoint and the weight. Um, we just purchased the traffic counters, and we're gonna be setting those out. The good thing about these traffic counters, it'll determine if it's a car or it's a truck. So, I really want to get that information so we can make a good decision what we're gonna do. Number two is, is that, as you, as I mentioned, I'm concerned about the actual roads and how long it's gonna last. So, uh, I'm working with Zach. We're trying to get a company together that actually, what they do is they, they will actually bore, you know, a hole in going down into the subsurface of that road, and then they some way pressurize that and determine what kind of weight that, that can hold. That's another decision-making of what we're gonna try to do. Now, if there's something else you would like me to do, I'll be glad to do that. But, um, that's, I do think we need to have some good information before we kind of stick our necks out here. Now, one option I thought about was is, uh, the semi-trucks and those big roll-off containers that weigh over eighty thousand pounds, find another route and just use the regular trash trucks, you know, the pickup trash from, from residential used Clink. Um, but you guys need to kind of think about it. Let's maybe discuss it in the next COW. Is that a...
Absolutely.
Okay with you?
Yes.
The construction is done when they close the lane. I mean, that's all done. They got their, they got their stormwater in, so, um, we'll figure all that out. Anybody have any questions on that? Um, I also put in your packet a financial policy. This really kind of outlines how we're gonna do the budget, how investments need to go, all that kind of stuff. Take a look at it. We can take a, we'll look at it at the COW. Uh, it's just another policy, I think, that would be good. As you know, what you do now can actually affect ten years from now, and these things are, are good to have. Um, we are out for bid on a city roof replacement, City Hall's roof replacement. So, it was advertised in the paper Sunday. So, uh, those bids will actually be open September twelfth, and we'll see what happens.
When does that close?
Uh, twelfth, September twelfth.
Closes at the twelfth?
Yeah, at two o'clock, I believe. The bids will be open. And don't forget about Halloween in the park. We've got a good, uh, crew together that's, uh, working as a team to put that together for everybody, for the kids. So, um, anybody have any questions?
Quick question about the traffic counters on Clink's. Uh, when do those hit the streets?
What's that?
When are those going out, those traffic counters?
We're gonna get them out probably next week.
Okay.
I'm gonna work with Zach. We're gonna try to figure out where the best spot is to catch them. But it will definitely, you'll be able to see what percentage trucks are versus what cars are.
Fantastic.
And we'll get a better idea, as you mentioned, how many, how much trips a day are running up through there.
How long are we gonna keep it out?
Pardon?
How long are we new to tracking?
Probably a week. We'll do, we'll probably do maybe once a month or something. You'll see how that all works out. So, anybody have any questions?
Did you say, um, back to Clink's Road and the stoplight, did you say they have fifty days to complete the stoplight?
They had a total of two hundred and fifty-five days.
So, they have fifty days left? What happens if they don't complete it?
About fifty days left, yeah.
What happens if they don't complete it in the fifty?
Well, I don't know. That's an RDOT deal. Would they have to be fined that, or whatever? I don't know. I haven't, I haven't seen the contract, but that's my understanding.
So, if they're behind, Mr. Latham, uh, it sounds like we wouldn't be the ones pursuing that, but RDOT would. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on. Next, comments from citizens. Do you have any citizen comments at this time?
McWagner, four nine, Penzoil Avenue. Um, an invoice was presented to the city on April twelfth of twenty twenty-three. I only bring this up because, although you're not speaking about the audit, uh, the audit does tend to get the low-hanging fruit, doesn't see everything. Uh, in regards to that business, which is located on the mayor's property, uh, there was no business license, and it wasn't applied for until eight months later. Uh, it was issued by a, um, administrative assistant who told me that was her first day on the job doing that particular topic. But, uh, in that application, it said the business started in two of twenty-three, not four of twenty-three. TCA Code one ten point nine nine says there's a penalty for operating without a business license within city limits of between five hundred and one thousand dollars, as well as a cease and desist order shall be issued to someone operating without a business license. Again, a bit, a second business license was issued on seven two of twenty-four. That particular license was issued by the city bookkeeper, Mr. Pat Panalto. In the requirements that are outlined in the code cited above, there are several criteria that has to be met before a, a business license is issued. Several existed at that time and including the first one. On five twenty-nine, a letter from the city noted numerous, uh, code violations, including an invalid, uh, business license. Again, on seven twenty-four, Mayor, uh, Mayor Ackman, Attorney Ackman and five other staff noted deficiencies and met with lawyers of the mayor's family. And, um, of that, I can't find any minutes or recordings or anything, so I'm not sure what all happened in that meeting. Maybe Mr. Ackman can shed light on it. On eight eleven, you had a third license was issued, uh, with outstanding code violations, which, again, conflicts with city codes. Um, I referenced the organization chart, uh, which was passed last month by you people, and, uh, there is a permit department, uh, but I'm not sure why. One month, we get it from the city, uh, administrative assistant, and next, from the bookkeeper. But, anyway, food for thought. But, there was a meeting held on seven ten, uh, regarding your audit, but I'd encourage you all to look at the video. You'll note that it was referred to the prosecuting attorney.
Okay. Anybody else?
Don't get no germs on me. Sorry.
Kenneth Lovett, eighteen seven oh two, Clearwater Road. We need to find that fellow a job. He ain't got nothing better to do.
Uh, Mr. Lovett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burr, I can take care of this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Lovett, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate you. On, uh, Thursday, August the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, we had a fire at Tonny Town, uh, Eco Vista Waste Management. Started somewhere after three thirty, burned into the night. Mr., uh, what's his name? Jamie, James Vernon, wrote a email to Director Reed at Boston Mountain. He said, regarding the fire at Eco Vista landfill yesterday, it started at approximately three thirty-five PM in the class construction and demolition landfill. It was fully contained at approximately five thirty PM and fully extinguished at eight thirty PM. I have a picture at nine oh three PM. Huge fire. Waste management has systems in place to extinguish fires, but the best system in prevention is prevention. All customers should review the list of acceptable materials before expo- disposing any solid waste at landfills. Eco Vista is a billion-dollar company. They blame their problems on customers. They are supposed to check randomly each vehicle that comes in there. If they don't check it randomly, they should see what goes in the landfill before they crush it and cover it. They're not doing their jobs. You, as a city, have opportunities that should be looked into. It gets frustrating when you continue to see things happening, and the ADQ don't touch it, the UPA don't touch it. And a lot of times, I stand here looking at butting faces. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Okay, and is there anyone else? Matty, is there anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We will move on. Approval by the city council members to waive the three reading rule on all ordinances on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
All right. We will move on. Uh, go to old business. Approval of sealed bids for five eighty-one South Barrington House. Mr. Latham.
Well, I want to report that we did not receive any bids as of Monday at four o'clock. Uh, we did have some inquiries of it, but, uh, we have not received any bids. Um, you know, our best option right now, I know that, uh, Aaron from Dryad indicated that he would actually move it, uh, remove it if that's the desire of the city right now. Um, I will tell you, Andy, I didn't get the follow-up with you this afternoon, but I did reach out, found out that, uh, that the, uh, there's a company up in Bentonville, um, who basically goes in and recycles some of this stuff that's in the home. I talked to a young man named, uh, AJ. Um, he said they were very much interested. Uh, they look at cabinets. They might look at utility, uh, I mean, stoves or anything like that, doors, windows, anything that they might be able to reuse. Um, I've asked Scott Artemati to go in and take, uh, video of what's in the house and around the house, and we'll send that to him, and then he'll contact us back on whether or not that's something they would like to do. Unless the city has any other desires, um, I know that we are trying to close on the property, um, probably early next week. So, um, any questions?
Yeah. Per our contract with Amalfi, that's supposed to be off that property by what date?
I don't know.
Wasn't ever established.
Okay. And then, uh, per the, uh, the bid process, where we were looking for bids to move the house, uh, did we have a date? I thought we had a date on that.
Yeah, it was Monday, Monday at four o'clock.
I made for the house to be removed from the site.
Thirty days after that.
Thirty days after. Okay. So, we're, we're talking about middle, middle September. That was our thought process to have it off originally, yeah? Okay. Um, you guys don't want it? Well, we probably need to talk about it at the COW, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. New business. Acceptance of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit report. Uh, we are required to accept the review of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit report. Every council member should have gotten the audit in the mail. You need to review that, and we can discuss, uh, that further at this coming September COW meeting. So, it will be on the agenda, so make sure that you guys look over it. If there's any questions that you have prior to the meeting, please email me, and I will be glad, more than happy to, to answer. All right.
Do you need a motion or just the, the acknowledgement that we all received?
There just needs to be a motion that, and I think you can phrase it the same way as it was amended, acknowledgement of the receipt of the...
Okay.
Um, of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit report.
Do we need to allow public comment on this before we make a motion and all that?
It's a new business item, so, yeah, you can, you can do that.
We can do that? Okay, sure. If, if there's any citizen comments, you may come up to the podium. Name and address, please.
McWagner, four nine, Penzoil Avenue. Uh, yeah, there's some items that I certainly would like to discuss, but it'd be more timely, I think, when you got the documents reviewed and looked at. So, if you're gonna allow those at that meeting, wow, if that's the discussion of it, I, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Matty?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I'll need a motion.
So, I'll make a motion that, um, we have acknowledgement of receipt of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit report.
I'll second that. Yeah, I'll second that. Okay, roll call. Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of ordinance to change the city's email retention policy. Mr. Wish Koyak.
Yes, I don't, I don't have much to add. Um, uh, the changes were made that were requested the seven year, and then, uh, I had asked for, um, the old ordinance was null and void, which is done by section ten. All ordinances are parts of ordinance in conflict here with or hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict. Uh, as we mentioned, we, we didn't have really, uh, that was the policy that we had, the old twenty fifteen, whatever, five eleven, I can't remember what it was, but, um, and it had some language in there that, um, left too much to discretion of the recipient and the reader. So, this pretty much just lets everybody know out here that we're gonna retain all emails that we receive, uh, for seven years, regardless of what they are. And my understanding is that's not gonna cause any constraints for, um, servers in retaining those. So, uh, I don't have anything else to add, if anybody else wants anything else to add or to discuss on.
And the current retention policy, remind me, is how long?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
It's only, that's the only timeline mentioned in the old ordinance.
Okay. And, um, I know that we briefly talked about ten years, and we landed on seven. Um, a, a seven's a heck of a lot better than thirty days, but was there, I mean, is, is anybody amendable to going out to ten, or is seven the magic number?
I believe they, uh, in the meeting, they said seven, that was the state law.
No, it was the state law.
That's, I believe that's what was said in the meeting. Is that correct, Mike?
Well, I think, uh, I mean, I, I think you can go as long as you want. Obviously, there are certain things that we retain in perpetuity, and there are five of those items that are, I think we laid out at the last meeting. Uh, that's, uh, mandated by state law. Really, federal and state guidance on municipalities and retention policies are, uh, but for those mandated items are pretty much left at our discretion. So, uh, in looking at that old ordinance, um, it wasn't terribly problematic, but it wasn't very thorough either. But like I said, there was one... mandated items are pretty much left at our discretion. So, uh, in looking at that old ordinance, um, it wasn't terribly problematic, but it wasn't very thorough either. But like I said, there was one clause in there, and I did not bring it with me, but, you know, it basically said that, uh, the recipient of the email, it didn't say that those words, but, um, had the discretion to delete.
The ones that could not be.
Yeah, so, certain ones, obviously, you can't delete.
Absolutely.
But, and, and the reason this all came about is, is when we open our email, it says at the top, retention policy, seven years. So I just always assumed that there was that, that was the retention policy, we had to keep them for seven years. Uh, but, you know, doing a little digging, found that old ordinance, and, uh, this just codifies it, where, you know, the public can be assured that we're just not going through and, you know, expunging things that we don't want anybody else to see.
I think the reason that was done was because there were so many repetitive emails, so many ads, so many things like that. And besides that, because of the excessive FOIA's that we constantly get, that also causes a whole lot more work for our staff.
And, you know, I don't know if, uh, if we retain these, I don't know if we need to do something on, to help you on, on that end as far as finding a, um, a software that helps expedite the FOIA process. We discussed this a few meetings ago with JustFOIA and a couple of other ones, obviously something that's probably want to look at too. Um, so, but yeah, and, and I get it, I've, you know, I've got the focused and I've got the other, and I hardly ever open the other folder of, in my email inbox from the city, because most of it is just what we would probably consider spam. But, you know, just in case there's something I, I, you know, don't pick out of there, it's, it's going to be there, you know, probably until after I'm out of office here. So, anyway, that's my thoughts on it.
To further that, I just, I think I told you today, Mike, or no, it was last night, I believe I talked to you last night, um, that we are looking at the different programs that we can use, and I think that Megan has found one, and it's the same one that Rogers uses.
Okay.
It's really awesome. Go to Rogers, uh, FOIA website, look at that one if you don't mind, and see what you guys think.
Don't mind at all.
Because I, I looked at it today, and I thought it was great. But that's just my opinion, or your opinions. I'll let you guys look at it if you don't mind.
I'll be glad to, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any citizen comments?
Uh, yes. Okay, is there any citizen comments on this?
I'm so sorry, I had asked a question that, that I didn't get an answer to. Is anybody, maybe that was the answer, is anybody amenable to going out to 10 years? It sounds like that seven years is not a law, but rather a suggestion from the state. Is anybody willing to look at a 10-year retention policy versus the seven?
I'm down with seven, so I have it at all my employers that I've worked at.
Thank you, Councilmember Piazza, appreciate it.
Okay.
I'm okay with seven.
I'm all right with seven personally.
Cool.
All right, now I'm going to ask again, any citizen comments at this time concerning this subject? Thank you, Matty. All right.
Mayor? I need to read the title.
Yes, sir, go ahead, right ahead.
Uh, City of Tontown, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance to establish a policy for the retention of electronic mail, email records, to prescribe a minimum retention period of seven years, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Okay, now.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. No, let Larry do it. I take mine back.
Okay, who's going to be second?
I got Larry down as second.
Okay, roll call, please. Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Miss Artemati, thank you very much for that. Okay, moving on to approval of the ordinance to rezone 1529 Artemani Road, parcel number Mr. Spurlock.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, if you give me your indulgence for just a moment, uh, I hope I'm not stepping on anybody's toes, but I'd like to introduce a new employee for the city in our department, Ms. Jody Tarver is here. I don't know if that was going to be scheduled with you or anything, so I do apologize. She's our new code enforcer.
All right, welcome.
Would you, would you come up for just a moment, please?
Want to put you on the spot right here.
Yeah, we're going to put you, sorry.
Good evening.
This is our new code enforcer. Would you mind telling them a little bit about your background if you don't mind?
Um, well, I've been in Arkansas for about seven years. I came here for, to be a state parole officer, um, so I've been doing that for about a little over five years. Um, absolutely loved it, but wanted to get into something different without the, the law enforcement side. Um, and so I went into security and found this online, and I'm praying that it's a beautiful fit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Welcome. So we were lucky enough to get someone from law enforcement.
How about it?
Yeah, I know.
She already has her car, she's already hitting the road running, so she's damn good.
Actually, I passed you the other day. I did.
But we're excited to have her, but.
Passed you this way, not going around you. Just wanted to clarify that.
But what you have before you here, this is something that was brought before Cal, you guys unanimously approved it to move it to city council for approval. I'm here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Because they want to put a second house on there, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. If there aren't any other questions.
Do I have any citizens that have, would like to comment on this?
No.
Nope? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Burris.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor.
I think Justin needs to read, yes. Justin, would you mind reading that, please?
City of Tontown, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance to rezone approximately 5.02 acres of real property located at 1529 Artemani Road, parcel number 830-37979-002, from agriculture aid to residential estates RE in the city of Tontown, Arkansas.
Okay, now, Mr. Burris, was you wanting to make a motion on that, sir?
Yes, I would still like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please. Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Approval of, uh, sorry, I'm just jumping ahead, do you mind? Do you have anything else on that one?
Oh, no, I thought that my next one was coming up.
Okay, it is, I just wanted to make sure that you were finished with that.
Yeah, I'm finished.
All right. D, approval of a resolution on a subdivision plat. Mr. Spurlock, again.
This is the final plat resolution that has been presented before you guys. I know everybody had a chance to review this, has been vetted by Madeline Parker and myself to move forward. Uh, here to answer any questions, should you have any?
Any citizen have any questions on this? Okay, council?
No questions, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Danny. Or Mr. Montez.
Who's the second?
Misty. Roll call, please. Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Moving on. E, an approval to add Rachel Strickland as museum board member. Ms. Piazza, would you mind, since you did it at the Cal, would you mind?
Hello, Rachel, how are you? I'm good.
Good, thank you.
Emily's got COVID, so please pray for her. So Julie did the report, and I'm doing this part. So Rachel was unanimously voted to join our board to help with fundraising and fill a gap that we desperately need. She does fundraising with the Walton Art Center, and her experience is going to be invaluable. So tonight, we're asking that you approve for her to join our board.
Okay, any questions? Okay. No questions? Citizens, no questions?
Did she say the 14th?
13th.
13th, all right.
And we can have up to 15.
Fantastic.
We don't plan to go that high. We, we plan to kind of stay where we're at right now. This would probably be the max for us.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Thank you. Roll call, please. Daniel?
Yes.
Miss D?
I'm staying.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you. Congratulations.
For Mr. Strickland.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on to F, approval of a resolution to revise bank signatures. Ms. Artemati.
Oh, do you have any questions?
I don't.
There's four people going to be able to sign our city checks, which is Larry, or me, the mayor, Larry, and Amber, and they will also be on the safety deposit box. And those are the only four. So, anything you want to add, Justin?
Okay. I think that's, I think that is an awesome idea. All right, um, any citizen comments on this? All right, council?
I think Mr. Lovett.
Oh, Mr. Lovett. Are you making your way up here?
Slowly.
Yes, sir.
Sure. Kenneth Lovett, 18702 Clearwater Road. In 20, January 14, 2020, the process of reclassification from second-class city to a first-class city was completed on that date. Change of complac, of classification was based on Tontown's population exceeding 2,500 residents, which is the threshold for the first-class city. Tontown now has over 8,000 residents, I believe. Small-town politics still are a thing. They should be the thing of the past. But as you see in Tontown, there are several members of the staff that are members of each other's families. Rhonda brought up in the Cal meeting, Tontown government needs to check, needs a check and balance system because she can't keep up with all that's going on. I think the city needs to look into considering ways to, uh, deal with several families, several people in one family, working for the city at one time. I know of three, uh, two different cases. There's three people and two people that I'm aware of that are blood relatives and work under the city. And other companies set it up where cities have it, where, uh, you can't work under one of your relatives, and other people have it set up other ways. But I would appreciate it if the city would look into, uh, that in the future, and, uh, I think it would address a lot of the problems, uh, that I run into with attitudes, really. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
I have no comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call. Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on. Approval of a resolution to update a MAFI contract to build Fletcher Road. And I want to apologize to you guys, I'm sorry I didn't get you at the top of the, um, agenda. I had told you at one point that I would try to do that, and somehow you guys got put on the very end, so I apologize. Okay, do we have, Zach?
Zach is going to come up here and talk to us.
Okay, so do I have any citizens have any questions on this? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call. Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ma'am, may I follow up with one quick question that kind of pertains to this, and it came up in Mark's talks about the, the bids going out for, uh, the western portion, and we talked about this a little bit last night, and I, I heard that you're saying that you're letting it for bid in September, potentially?
Uh, that'd probably be a little aggressive, but next, probably two months would be a, would be a goal.
Okay.
We've, we've still got to shore up some right-of-way out there before that goes out to bid, so.
Yeah, it would just be, I mean, I see the, I love the timeline that these guys have for completion of it, uh, January 30th or February 28th of '26, uh, the, the deal is definitely a good deal for Tontown, but it'd be awesome if we could complete our portion in congruence with their timeline. And I know that may not be possible, and I know I'm putting you on the spot by doing this right now, but.
I'll put it this way, I, I would love to see these being worked on concurrently, not linearly, or sequentially, so, um, now that this is settled, I can put my focus over on the west side.
Okay.
And, uh, we're gonna, we'll try to get that out as soon as we can.
All right, thanks, and I'm sorry for throwing that in at the end.
Okay. Comments from Alderman.
Mr. Montez, do you want to be first or last?
I can go first. I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Congrats to the new hires and the new appointings, um, and everybody have a great night. It sounds like it's going to get us with some rain here in a little bit, so get home dry.
Ms. Piazza?
Uh, thank you, everyone, for coming out, and thank you for everyone that comes and, and gives their thoughts on things. Um, we can't grow and be better if we can't, don't hear from you. Uh, welcome to our new code enforcer, and congratulations, Rachel. Have a good night.
Ms. Abara?
I just echo exactly that, um, welcome to Tontown, um, on the museum board, and welcome code enforcement. What was your name again?
Jody Tarver.
Jody, welcome, and that's all I have.
Mr. Artemati?
Same old, same old. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. As I've said before, whether you agree or disagree, uh, it's good to hear because you never want complete agreement, that can't be a good thing. But, uh, welcome, Jody, welcome, Rachel. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Burris?
Thank you. So thankful that you want to serve on the museum board. Thank you for being willing to do that, and welcome. Jody, uh, Ms. Tarver, so nice to meet you, and I'm thrilled that you're in that position, and I understand it's not necessarily, uh, the job that everybody, uh, wants to do. I don't know that I'm built for it, but I suspect you are, and thank you for your willingness to do that, I really appreciate that. Uh, to, uh, our chief of police, I know Mr. Montez mentioned it earlier, uh, but there are unsavory elements that happen all over the place, even in a place as amazing as Tontown. And, um, as a father, as a citizen, as a council member, as a businessman here in the area, I don't want the unsavory elements here. And I know it's not safe and easy to get rid of those things, but I am so thankful for the hard work that you all put in, and I know you had a big win recently, and I'm just so thankful for that. Thank you. The grape festival was super fun, as always. I got my grape ice cream. I hope you took my advice and did it. Uh, if you didn't, you, you have to wait another year. Um, but, uh, get on that. Lastly, uh, there's a comment, uh, from a citizen here, uh, just a few minutes ago about, um, uh, various family members. I think there is a difference when those family members are elected officials. I don't know if that was part of the concern or not, but, uh, an elected official is elected, uh, just like anybody else would be. But, um, other than that, uh, probably bears some looking at. Thanks.
Mr. Wishcoyac?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, welcome, Ms. Tarver. Uh, I'm glad you're with us, and I'm sure the planning department's glad you're with us, too. So I hope you have those same sentiments in six months from now. Um, I want to commend the museum for having, uh, 13 people to volunteer. That's pretty impressive. Uh, welcome, Rachel. And I wanted also dovetail on comments. Um, I hear the frustration in people's voices when they, they make citizen comments, and citizen comments go, look like they're falling on deaf ears, because we are not allowed to participate in dialogue when those comments, uh, come up. But I just wanna bring this up as food for thought for a council. If they're amenable to, uh, this at a just further discussion, where citizens can submit questions that they want answered by the council, be recorded by our recorder treasurer, distributed to council, and we do what we can to answer what we can, so that people can feel like they're being heard. Um, because I, I can, we, we can all hear the frustration. So, I don't, you know, that's something maybe we can talk about in the future, but, um, just something to think about if, if y'all are interested in doing it. But thanks again for everybody for coming out, and thanks you guys for the agreement for the road. I, I think it's a good deal for, uh, Tontown, for sure.
All right. Next is comments from the mayor. Uh, I just wanted to apologize to you guys about the audit being put on here at the last minute. I had sent it in two months ago to be put on the agenda, and I got COVID and wasn't here, as you guys know. And, uh, there was just different things that had happened. And, uh, it, we had it scheduled to go on there, and somehow it just, it didn't get caught until I saw it. So I just wanna let you know that was totally a mistake, and it will be discussed at the next COW. Um, all right. Also, um, on August the 11th, here in Chambers, uh, there was hell, the held, uh, Black Hills Energy Health 811, um, meeting. They went over lots of things with all of the, uh, water department about the digging. Call 811 before you dig, call 811 before you dig. Um, it went well. They brought us pizza, and, uh, we had water. Everybody was able to get in and listen, that wanted to and that was here, was able to come in and listen to it. And it was a very, very good meeting. Now, um, I have some really, really exciting news. I know a lot of times, um, we hear things, bad things. We hear things that just, you know, disappoint us, and, um, things that we don't wanna look at or we need to look at. Okay, so, Mr. Clark, myself, and Mr. Latham went and met with Mr. Womack. And we requested monies for the gravity line, for the construction of a gravity sanity, sanitary sewer system that will be, that will replace the city's primary sewer lift station. And we asked this, we had to send in lots of forms, um, but we were awarded the money. The city of Tontown was awarded the money. We were one of, I believe, 13, 14, 14 people that was awarded money. $12.2 million. $12.2 million. We, the city of Tontown will receive $12.2 million for the water system improvements. And, um, Mr. Womack called me and, um, early, early one morning, and, um, if everything goes through each department, uh, we should be getting it, hopefully, uh, early next year. And, um, I am very, very grateful for this money that was allocated to us. Um, I wanna thank Mr. Latham for, um, all of his hard work. I wanna thank Mr. Clark for all of his work in helping get this thing put together, and the city of Tontown is going to be awarded this money for this sewer line. And while we, before, we were actually walking out the door, and, um, Mr. Womack's, uh, one of his affiliates said, "Wait, wait, wait. We've gotta have a picture." So we were able to take this picture, and I got a copy of it, and that was us have after, right after the meeting. So, thank you, welcome. And, uh, welcome to this, Rachel. Uh, thank you, guys, for everything that you, the citizens do to help us, and I think it's very, very important that we, you know, do, that we do listen to you and that we give as much feedback as we can to you. And, um, I just wanna thank you all. Ms., uh, Attorney Eichmann, do you have any comments?
No, Mayor, I did not.
Okay. All in agreement with adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Brad, you can remove that now. Thank you.